Thank you. This is the special meeting on April 6, 2021 of the Montgomery Independent School District Board, Board Trustees. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Which we'll do just right there.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
All right. Tonight, we are joined by Posse. Dr. Morrison, want to open us up on that one?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Ford. We are, Dr. Ford. We are on a journey. The premier school district in the state of Texas, and you have to know where you're in, to know where you're going. And you have to have data to take you along that journey. We've got a lot of data that we've been sharing with the board over the last several months. We did the compensation review. That was critically important. Recently, you saw the CASB staffing information. That's been critically important. CASB HR review, critically important. And this board sought that last year to allow us to go forward with demographic study. Demographic study is important for a number of different reasons, but the decisions that you have to make as a board become more complicated if we are a declining school district. If we are a growing school district, then that creates its own set of challenges and opportunities. But I think it's safe to say, any board across the great state of Texas, or anywhere in the country, and any superintendent would rather have the challenges and the opportunities with being a growing school district than a declining school district. But, you know, as they say, hope is not an option. You need the data. And so the board sought that to move forward with a demographic study. And we are very excited tonight to have that presented through the board. We basically structured this to have our company present the data to you, ask, to give you the opportunity to ask data-related questions. And then we're going to put demographic review study on the next board meeting for more conversation, discussion. And, you know, again, like every bit of data, you know, you have the data, but then the question is, what are you going to do about it? So tonight, it's not so much what we're going to do about it. Tonight, it's really just to make sure that we have a comprehensive understanding of the data, what it says, what it doesn't say, and allow our board to have the opportunity to ask any questions that you may want to have. With that, I turn it over to the firm to put together Posse.
Good evening. I will try my best to be brief, but want to get all the information across. And then any Q and A after, I guess, because we do that after space presence, she'll come after me and discuss all of the data. I will talk about, which is mostly our research methodology and housing data. She'll talk about how that all affects your campuses and your student enrollment. So we've actually, the last study we conducted for Montgomery was back in April 2018. That was the 17, 18 school year. That was right after Harvey, but then, you know, pre-pandemic. So for the last few years, Montgomery's been chugging along with pretty normal growth. But the pandemic happened, and you saw a loss of 1% or 1%. Not unusual. Every school district, for the most part, lost. There were only a couple of big gainers. But we're talking about districts that are growing typically at 4%, 5% or more a year into the thousands. So you're nowhere close to that yet. But the big number I wanted to kind of focus on, and I've been doing this with all of our clients, it's our loss of 3% from what you would think would be your projection. We didn't do this study last year, but when we kind of roll your students forward, we call it aging. When we look at your typical growth from year to year, you should probably, you know, gain, you know you should, a couple of maybe 100 or 150 students. Meaning you actually lost closer to 265 students. You didn't necessarily lose them. Maybe they didn't show up. What we're finding a lot is that students aren't actually showing up from moving into new neighborhoods. We saw record home construction since, say, going back to 2006 in 2020. So we know a lot of people moved into homes. I'll get into that in a minute. But we didn't actually see that student growth. So a lot of students maybe decided, oh, I'm going to stay enrolled online. You know, some were at the scene, or they just didn't want that transition to happen this year as families move. But we have to make assumptions, and we have to assume that come October 2021, later this year, we're going to see a big rebound. Closer to three quarters of these students who didn't show up could be in your case. We had to make an assumption. As time has gone on, the last six months, there's been a lot more positive news about vaccines and just in general regarding the pandemic. We've even had a lot of districts already see a huge rebound in the small, say, K and grade one students who didn't show up, which is where the majority of losses have been. We have to assume people will start coming back, especially in October. All of our projections are for October of every year. And I just remember that as we move forward, because that's your TPA snapshot. That's that official snapshot date. So we also create projections for that date. I mentioned that housing acceleration, and it really accelerated. We had most of our high-growth districts increased by 40% housing from projection. That's huge. Normally, you couldn't even dream of being that off. But because of those low mortgage rates, starting in April, May, June, people started buying homes. And those low mortgages were of course caused because of the pandemic. All investors needed to find a place to put their money, right? Anyway, that growth wasn't as dramatic here. You had to have lots available and on the ground. So you have to think of really big neighborhoods that had huge growth. Think out in Sycamore, Bridling, their growth is enormous. They saw almost 1,000 home sales in 2020, up from a record 700 just last year. So big neighborhoods that had the lots on the ground saw the growth. MISD did not necessarily, but you had some new neighborhoods, and we'll talk about that in a minute. So moving forward, I want to get this out of the way, just our regional economy. So Houston Metro lost almost, I don't know, 350,000 to 400,000 jobs in those two months a year ago. We've had, I think by now, we're in March, April already. We don't have that up-to-date data. By now, we're pushing over 60% of those have come back roughly. Houston's not doing as well as some other metro areas, but most metros are somewhere between that 60 and 100% uptick from that growth. So we're still looking at pre-pandemic job loss, but they're coming up. Again, I mentioned those historically low rates, and another part of that, another storyline, is the apartment vacancies. You don't have a lot of apartments, but when we look at apartments metro-wide, vacancies are above 1%. And that doesn't seem like a lot, but when you start calculating hundreds of thousands of apartments, that means a lot. A lot of those renters moved into homes because of those rates. They took advantage of it. So we saw that surge in new home sales and also low inventory. Existing homes aren't selling because no one was moving. People didn't know what was going to happen last year. A lot of people stayed put. You're just now starting to see a lot more new homes get put on the market. Another thing I'm not going to really touch on, it's really convoluted. It's hard to really get good data on. But a lot of the job losses in the energy sector were focused more in this region, the north-southern. So you think about Anadarko a year ago, Noble Energy, ExxonMobil even laid off quite a few people. All focused in that Woodlands sub-market for the most part. So kind of think about these things. Five, six years ago, of course, the ExxonMobil effect, as we call that, you know, they caused a huge surge in new housing in this entire county. That's cooled a little bit since ExxonMobil moved up there to Springwood Village. And this kind of cooled that energy sub-market as well. Anyway, we always show these maps. This is going back to last year, unfortunately. We just got in the new data from the TDA just this weekend, basically. So we haven't had time to fix these maps up for Kermit data, although I can tell you, most of the districts lost or really didn't gain too much. Looking back in fall 2019, this is what your total school district enrollment looked like. So out of 61 districts, Montgomery ranked 27th with over 9,000 back in fall 2019. And five-year change, and this is important, it really doesn't matter that we don't have this year's numbers, because that five-year change just shows us where that growth is coming. And you're in yellow, which means you've kind of got that moderate growth going on. You're not high-growth. When we look at your five-year change number, you're over 1,000, which is really hefty, I'd say. But it still ranks you 19th in the metro area. Just for comparison, say, number 15 is Waller. They are soon to be considered very, very high-growth, but you're getting there at over 1,000 new students every five years. In the next five years, you'll be gaining even more. When you look at percent change, though, you're orange, meaning you've kind of got a high percent change just because you're small, close to the limit. So over 13% growth in those five years. That's actually more than Magnolia to yourself. I don't have them on here, but we can find that number. So we like to kind of compare this district to the region for the most part, just to kind of see where you fall. And some of these points here, I'll talk about, your median age is always a focal point, right? We know Montgomery ISD is one of the older school districts in this region. In fact, Dallas and Montgomery have some of the oldest, if you will, census tracts. Most census tracts don't average 60, 60 years or over, but both Montgomery and Dallas have some of those. So your median age is a lot older, and it's that, I call it that Laker thing. So the lake does play a role. We'll show those numbers in a minute on where the student density is. So you have, we have to consider that in certain neighborhoods. We know not every neighborhood is going to have a high amount of students, but some of your newer ones coming in, for instance, Fairwater, we're projecting more students than you would typically see. We're starting to see that growth come in from the home. So another outlier, I'd say, is your median household income. That just puts you at a wealthier, wealthier district. A lot of times, home builders like to see that. They see it as a more desirable area to build in. So we'll continue to see home builders seek this area out. This chart just shows you your growth of going back over 10 years. So I know a lot of you are new to the district, or not to the district, but maybe since post. You can see that your growth had been really strong, you know, looking at anywhere from, you know, some years, 3%, 4%, 5%. But it kind of, there's a really strange wave in that line. A lot of districts that are growing is pretty much a straight line up. Not here. A lot of times, it has to do with when a new neighborhood's going to move in. So for a few years, you might have growth or just, you know, regular changes in population. You know, a lot of times, we have a big class move through. And so Montgomery has often had these kind of waves in its growth, and it's not really unusual. This year, of course, was due to the pandemic at that negative 1%. This is just showing proportion of students by grade group. I think the interest you take away here is this white line. The growth in the upper grades, that could be due to a couple of things, the opening of Lake Creek. It could be due to also just an aging bubble in the population. But that blue line is, it would normally be concerning in a district that was more mature, when you're losing elementary students. In this district, I'm not too concerned. It just, because you're about to have more students move in, of course, because of new homes. But what that means is we don't really have right now a big bubble in the lower grades. And we can look at that and see that on this chart as well. This is just showing your population by grade grouping. And that blue line right there is, this, these three bars for this year. So the blue line this year, of course, went down. Most of your losses, and you're not, you are very similar to every other district in the state. Most of your losses were in the lower grades. Almost every district lost a lot pre-K 1 to, and it kind of trailed off from there. And in fact, a lot of districts did not lose any high school students. It just was unchanged for the most part. But the blue line had been kind of up and down quite a bit. And I guess that's what I'm trying to get, get the point across, that you really haven't had a huge steady onslaught of elementary students. So we don't have a bubble quite yet. We, of course, track your kindergarten enrollment, and it's been pretty steady for it, too. Of course, this year, you can see, what we do here is we adjust the births by year. So we get these births from the state health department. They're overloaded this year due to COVID. Well, we've noticed over the last few years, we've got this uptick in births in Montgomery ISD. Started a few years ago. This line has aged. It's aged so it aligns with your kindergarten population. So we're starting to see a little bit more growth in kindergarten. You don't see a lot. It's hard to tell. But soon, we could be getting over 500 births a year. We are, actually. They just happened in 2018, 2019. And we hadn't had that. We've been under 400 for quite some time. So we can factor this in and assume that this growth will continue into your lower grades as these young children age. And that's what will happen. Now, I mentioned this earlier, you're more of a wealthy district, and you can see that in your economically disadvantaged population, we kind of consider this as a quality of life factor. Remember, I mentioned a lot of home builders look at these kind of data points? But anyway, you rank number four in the metro area as having the lowest number of economically disadvantaged students. This is just star testing. This is going back to spring 2019, since we don't have this last year's due to COVID. But you were ranked eight. We average all of the subsets. We don't just take the different groupings that the state provides. We actually average all of them to come up with this 86% passing rate. So that's a really good quality of life factor, too, that we would consider. And when we look at charter schools, it's really not important in this district. They're always important these days. I don't ever leave a presentation without showing a slide anymore. But the truth is, you are very much not affected by charter schools at the moment. Less than 0.5% of your actual K-12 population attends charters. And I can guarantee you, a lot of those are virtual students. So really, you're doing pretty well there. Looking at your enrollment share, it hasn't changed too much, to be honest. What, I kind of avoid some of these numbers here. What I really want to focus on are these bottom three numbers, or four, rather. We estimate that about 88% of your student population attends MISD. So that's quite a bit. Most districts average between about 89 and 93. So it's a little lower than average for the past. Really due to this high private schooling. You have over 6% of your students in private schools. What we do is contact every private school. We also take that data from the charter school database from the state, the transfers, and we look at that as well. And that's how we come up with this, you know, 0.5, 0.8%. We think there's been a little bit of increase in charter schooling enrollment this year, virtual schools, et cetera. But you also have quite a few students attending nearby districts. That data comes from the state as well. It's over 1.5%. They're transferring to districts like Conroe, Magnolia, your neighbors. Now, the growth is coming from housing. We all know that. And what I want to do here is kind of go over our methodology briefly. If you're new, you'll want to hear this. Listen up. This is your district. We split the district up into what we call planning units. Many of you have already looked at the report, have noticed this. All of our housing projections and our student enrollment projections are all divided up into these little geographies. And the way we get to them is we take your current attendance boundaries and we split them up. And we follow natural lines, subdivision boundaries, creeks, rivers, major roads. This helps in the planning aspect that Stacy will get to later. So all of this data can be followed by planning. We have some districts where people in the neighborhoods know what they're planning in the numbers, whenever they go through zoning processes and things like that. You take a look at all of your cities, there's two, so you're lucky. Some more districts have plus 10 plus. Conroe is really where most of the growth is in their ETJ. If you're unfamiliar with that, that's the extraterritorial jurisdiction of Conroe. Montgomery has an ETJ as well. Subdivision regulations must meet the city requirements. So subdivision building must meet city requirements in ETJ. So all the cities know about developments occurring in their ETJ. Most of your growth right now is happening in Conroe, but Montgomery does have private, too. It kind of snakes down at 149 in that purple area. That's Montgomery. This district, we have to really think about where growth won't occur. And these big blocks here, the National Forest and the Cooks Ranch Conservancy, we don't want to put students in these spaces, right? Because they're low. Now, of course, we know in the National Forest, there are little pockets, but no new major housing, right? We also look at floodplains. You have a really, really big flood plain that crisscrosses the district, going from north to south, Lake Creek. We have to look at the floodway and the flood plain of Lake Creek. And we also consider any kind of big land ownership where we know anything won't develop. So we look at inhibitors. We really follow utility districts. This is a legislative session here, so utility districts are being set up this year, municipal utility districts. In 2019, we had a couple set up. I highlighted them here. 167, 175. We've already had one mud almost become useless because the Mitchell Foundation purchased the land that was created in Conroe. Now, maybe another landowner could use the mud. I'm not sure. But my point is, these pop up all the time. This year, we don't know of any really serious muds going through the legislative session. But they don't have to necessarily. They can be created without the mud. We have another mud in the south that hasn't gotten going yet. That's Sky Ranch Mud. We'll talk about that in a minute and split between MISD and the other districts. We also look at water service districts as well. Without utilities, you can't have homes. You can't have these dense lands for the most part. All right, let's look at that housing start information. This is kind of an interesting one to me. You have most of our districts in the last year to skyrocket with new growth. But it didn't really happen here. Remember, I said in the beginning, you had to have lots available on the ground, ready to build, or your housing starts to pick up. You did. You picked up in 2020. Going back, you had over 300 starts a year. Looking back into mid-2010s, remember that was the time when ExxonMobil was building up this area? A lot of districts in the north had a surge in building going on. It's dropped. There haven't been a lot of new developments until this last year. You have Fairwater kind of came in and started some new growth, and you also had growth in other older neighborhoods as well. So it didn't really follow that metro average that's been ticking up. That's the yellow line, but it's starting to here in MISD. All right. So let's talk about some of these new neighborhoods. Fairwater and Pine Lake, you guys know they're happening. We already have 51 homes occupied in Fairwater. That's what helped boost that 2020 housing start via. Two builders right now. We're projecting the majority of these lots, pretty much all of them, to be occupied. We project to occupancy. We want to know when people are going to actually move in. We project that to occur within this 10-year period. Over 600 lots in Fairwater, DR Fortin's building, developing Pine Lake Cove. It's planned for over 700 lots from the original plan. It's already increased a bit. There's been a little bit of lot density increase. They're putting 45-foot lots in some of these sections. So it wouldn't surprise me if that kind of approaches 800 before it's all said and done. That development is off of 105 in the Conroe ETJ east. I believe the road is veering off of the south road.
It's Pine Lake.
Pine Lake, right there. Okay. So we've got a lot of sections currently being divided right now. This map is just showing you one year of the projections. Remember, we go out 10. And it's showing you by planning unit, these hotspots. You can follow this. You can see anything over orange is over 40 homes projected to be occupied just by October 2021. Just in the next, oh, six to nine months or so. We projected from February to January. You can see Fairwater really is the, or bad hotspot. We've got a couple of others. Bedwater, Walden, they never really stopped building, it seems like. They're just always chugging on. There's so many lots left to build out there. I mean, it's just a slower pace. Lake Conroe Village, when we were here last, I pointed that developing out. We had a couple of independent builders come in, and these lots are very, very, very small. This is off of one of the kind of east of Pine Lake that I was talking about. We still have over 700 lots available in that neighborhood. And there's a mix of manufactured housing, small homes, but Alta Homes is now building, not only here, but in a few other neighborhoods in Willis. ISD as well. And they're putting in 800, 1,000 square foot, 1,200 square foot homes on these very, very small lots. So it's something to watch. We haven't really seen that student density increase like we thought we might. And we saw these independent builders moving in, but it could change. I believe right now, there's over 20, 25 homes under construction and they were. So it's one of those surprising things. You don't think about it. So moving forward, oh, sorry, let me talk about some of the upcoming developments as well. We've continued to see, of course, Walden and Bedwater, I mentioned that, adding roughly 40 homes a year or so. A couple of others, back when we were here last, I remember mentioning vividly, we couldn't really decide at the time, was the growth really going to head west down 105, or were we going to have more growth around the 1488 toward into Montgomery ISD? There were several potential developments at the time. We didn't know what was going to kind of take hold first. And it took a few years, but it looks like 105, wow. That doesn't mean the growth won't occur in the south. There's still potential. It's still there. It's still in our projections. But what we're saying now is we're seeing the growth kind of accelerate in this region. So I mentioned Lake Conroe Village array, so I won't go into detail on that here in this slide. This slide shows the hotspots for the next five years. That first map showed one year. This is five years. You can see Pine Lake comes into the mix, Fairwater, the water in Walden. But a few developments now upcoming in the city of Montgomery proper are going to start coming online. So you'll start seeing more growth in the center part of town. We're also still seeing growth down in Wood Forest and the potential for Sky Ranch to start in the next five years. So we'll talk about that in a second. Buffalo Springs, that's the planned development where Town Creek Crossing is going in. Last time I drove by, they were clearing it. They may have utilities going in. It's roughly 200 single-family homes. Very small apartment property is under construction nearby, Hoover's Nest. Montgomery Ridge by the KOA property. Signarelli's claiming about 500 lots. Assuming that could get started soon. It's now fully controlled by the Conroe, in Conroe's jurisdiction. They worked that out over the last couple of years. And I know I'm going to butcher this name, so I'll just call it the K-Trek Kramer, Kramer. It's almost 400 acres south of Montgomery High School. So that's going to be the new big development in Montgomery. About a third to a half acre lots. It's Grace Point is developing it. They did Stillwater. Conroe ISD 45 north. So that will start picking up as long as that goes through, I believe, city council has pretty much given it to go, I would say. So that's expected to kind of start in the next couple of years. And they are going to be able to use city utilities in the very beginning of their development process and then formulate a plan, I think, for probably an in-city model, likely, as they continue to build more. These two muds I mentioned earlier, really only one is left because one of them was essentially taken up by the Conservancy. But Mud 167, it's off of 2854, and it's planned for 462 lots. So that could get going soon. The mud's been approved. It really just depends on when the developer wants to start it. Also, along 2854, I think this is kind of the question mark. Some of these down here are left until the end because we don't know what's going to happen. But there are 3,000 acres controlled by just two owners along 2854, Randall and Mayor Tracks. And so depending on what happens with these in the next five to 10 years, we have to kind of watch them. If we see a major community developer move in, buy one of these tracks, you're likely to see development pick up pretty quickly. I wouldn't say in the next one to two years, you'll see anything, but the potential is there, and it's in a very, very prime location. 3,000 acres, right, basically in the heart of Montgomery and just a little bit to the southeast. So we really need to watch that. We projected some growth to start in a few years, depending on what happens or if anyone buys these tracks. Sky Ranch is another one, and we just, really, there's nothing going on with it today. But I spoke with the manager of that property who's trying to sell it essentially. They're still actively trying to broker that land. So that's over 2,000 lots possible. That's split, though, between Magnolia and Montgomery. So the question then becomes, where did they start building? And that's kind of unforeseen at this point. But there are also a lot of other tracks adjacent to the Sky Ranch property. So these are all considered in our projections, but since nothing's actually But since nothing's actually imminently moving forward with these, we have to assume it will happen later in the projection period. So we have to factor these developments in. And they could be a game changer for Montgomery ISD once they get moved. Looking out in those 10 years, you can see, of course, where we've been talking about some of these developments that really kind of blow up. A lot of this red out here, most of it's happening really close to Montgomery. Those are big planning unit areas. But you'll notice Sky Ranch down here, it's now red, this is going out to 2030. We've kind of filled in this area along 2854. We really think that's going to be your growth hotspot. We're starting to see it already. We're starting to kind of hear about a lot of folks interested in these tracks of money. So as that interest picks up and people start buying them, and you can expect growth to follow. So looking out 10 years, this is your 10-year number. I would roughly say 10,000 homes, which could be anything from a house to an apartment to a manufactured home to an RV. Are essentially projected for the next 10 years. This zero right here, that's our age-restricted housing. We don't really know about anything official, that can change on a moment's notice. But most of your homes are single-family homes projected. And you can see there that orange bar is much higher than the blue. The orange is the latter five years of the projection period. So a lot of those tracks that I mentioned, there's really nothing happening today, but there's potential. We factored in that potential. We can't just forget about it. So we know that you're kind of the next step after Conroe along that 105 corridor. And there's not a lot of large land left in Conroe ISD.
Justin, before you move on, how, so you started the first slide saying that you go 3% off of your projection. How do we know we're not going to be 30% off on this projection?
You mean the 2030 projection?
Yeah, how sure are you about this number?
We're always very, much more, this is an interesting year to ask that question. Normally, year one, I'm extremely confident. And yeah, there might be some years where it's off. This district's a little, I'm going to be completely honest, this district's a little more difficult. I project for Lamar out of Fulton County, they gain 15 other kids a year. We're off usually by less than 100. This district, sometimes there can be a little, remember I mentioned those waves? And a lot of that has to do with your retirement community. With that said, year one is normally if you're at real confidence in it, because we know what's happening, we know where your students fall. The problem is, today, you're missing 200-plus kids. So when they come back, will affect year one or year two. We're assuming, we have to assume, a lot of that lost student enrollment will come back in fall 2021. Now, if it doesn't, we're going to be a little off, we're going to be a little high. If they all come back, we're going to be a little bit...
Let's update, if you remember, they were looking at an October snapshot. In October, we were down 288 students at the elementary level. Today, we're less than 80 students now.
That's a great point. Those are the students, those students that already came back, what was that, a couple hundred? They're already essentially factored in to our data for next year. So we had districts just like that gain four, five, 600 already since October. So there's always a little bit of an increase from October till, let's say, March equal after January. This year, there's a tremendous increase. Now, I continue answering your question really quick. The first five years, we had a lot more confidence in it. Because it takes builders, developers, a couple of years just to plan utility districts out, just to get moving on their developments, right? So when someone is planning something or hasn't even bought land yet, I know it's going to take them a few years to get going. So we know what's happening today. That means in the first five years, we're confident at this time. 2030, in these fringe districts like yours, ooh, there's so many variables, right? You could have a giant charter school pop in in 2025 in the heart of Montgomery. I mean, it's your worst-case scenario, and I don't think it's going to happen because we don't know of it right now. But if it did, you could lose 500 students overnight. So there are so many variables that could affect that 10-year projection that we just don't know about today. We could have another Harvey, who knows? Lake Conroe Danford those. I mean, there's just anything that could happen. After the last five years of disasters, I've pretty much given up on saying, I know what's going to happen in two weeks because I know. But...
We have to make an educated guess though, so that you can be planning in advance.
We also want to be a little conservative. When we have builders or developers tell us they're coming in, they're going to build 1,000 homes a year. Well, we know what they're doing in other areas. We know they've never built that many before. We know they don't have this setup, they're not ready yet, the city hasn't approved this, whatever, whatever. There's so many different things that developers have to do depending on the location. We have to think about those things as well.
And I'm sorry, we have Wade joining us and Shannon as well, maybe y'all can help with it. These numbers, y'all know, you said they come from a promise, they say they're going to build a little 1,000, but they end up building 800. Y'all calculate it for them?
We don't know exactly what will happen, right? We always have to start conservatively. Especially if a development hasn't even, you know, it's in a very, very early stage. Now, for instance, Fairwater, they're going to move in along. What we do is, as we update our projections from year to year or the other year, our confidence level increases. And it starts off with a rumor. You know, a lot of times that's Wade, right? The rumor starts. The city gets ahold of it. City Council gets ahold of something. They, you know, go back and forth with development. Then, they still have to build with it. So that starts. Then, we have to actually get houses built. I'll give you an example, Woodland Hills started three years ago in Willis, 45. They still only have about 300 occupied homes. Three years ago, they had 20. So it's picking up, it usually picks up slower, especially in these outlined areas. You don't just get 600 homes overnight built in areas where people aren't even familiar, where there's still cows in the pastures and, you know, it takes 20, 30 minutes just to get somewhere. So we're conservative when we start off these numbers. As you update these projections every year, you have to kind of reassess, and that's what we do. So I'll give you Fairwater, for example. Two, three years ago, the land hadn't sold yet, but we did project for it. And so we projected for it, and we just had to tone it down a bit. We didn't know quite when it would sell, but we said it would sell around this time, so it's already picking up, but we reassessed.
So I don't want to minnow this time, I'm sorry to hit you off track. One thing that just bothers me, I'm a little skeptical with demographics, y'all. So I mentioned that earlier, our demography. So you started out with that we've had not as tremendous growth as some of the areas around us. We've had, we've got lower elementary numbers right now. We've had no or slower starts up until this year on houses. But then we see a number that says, we only got 10,000 houses coming at us, you know? Like, I'm not putting the two sides of your argument together, Justin, I'm sorry.
Let me move forward.
Okay.
Let me paint the picture.
All right. I'll shut up, I really am trying to...
Remember what I talked about with you being kind of a retired couple? A lot of people move in at these homes, but they don't have children.
So they don't have what?
They don't have children. So let's get to that because that's basically next. So let's talk about these kids. That seems to always be a part where people kind of ask that question, and here we are. So this is what your average is for entirety of Montgomery ISD. For every 100 single-family homes, you average 39 students attending ISD. Apartments, it's even lower. So this is pretty normal for multifamily. This is very, very, very low for single-family. Normally, districts in suburban areas are closer to .55, .6. And in some, many, many high-growth neighborhoods, it's closer to 1. So some of your neighborhoods are pushing above .75, like Wood Forest. Let's look at this map. So any neighborhoods, these are your neighborhoods, just kind of overlaid on your district map. Any neighborhood with a red highlight has a ratio of over .6 students. You can see some of these big, large lot communities in the south, Crown Oaks, Grand Lakes. People buy a large house with large land, they want their kids to kind of roam around and play. That's what's happening, and it's closer into town. Not happening up here in Bedwater, look at that ratio, we call it a ratio of students per home, less than .2. And a lot of these lake communities have green. And I would consider green to be a very low student-to-house ratio. Remember I said, when you look at your current students and they align that with how many homes are occupied today? We have to do that, especially in growing neighborhoods like Fairwater, like, you know, Pine Lake soon to be. So that we know how many people are moving in, and we have a very up-to-date number on that ratio. Most of those homes that we're projecting aren't going to have kids. Just know that, based on your low student-to-home ratio. So we have to consider these ratios. A lot of people always think, oh, there's one kid, two kids per home and a dog, or whatever. No, and especially not true. But I did throw on your, I did throw on your, what's it, I throw on your Conroe ISD. Some of their 105, their new neighborhoods along 105, kind of as you're approaching the district here. Notice what they are, we want to consider this as well. They've got kind of average ratios, .4, .6, that's what we typically see. So these neighborhoods that are emerging on the 105 corridor are likely to have very, very similar student-to-home ratios as what we're seeing in Conroe right now.
Just to do a time check, you've got about 15 minutes before we have to move on. We've got some board members who have some other commitments.
All right. One or two. We can do this. We project a TBA snapshot, I think it's really important. No one starts off with what they end up with in October something. And we use a moderate growth scenario for everything Stacy's about to tell you regarding campus planning, moderate growth. Let's look at your first couple of years, lately I have to divide it up. So this is your 10-year projection. I know you're already looking at this number, 13, 4, 2, 0. But let's back it up to 21 and 22. These first two years are only over 200 students because of COVID. So next year, if we do get that rebound like we're assuming we will, you could see upwards of 300 students. If it weren't for COVID, it wouldn't even be close to that. But we have to consider a lot of them are going to come back, and some of that rebound may happen in 2022. Depending on what percentage comes back right away is going to kind of decide that. This could be more, it could be less, this growth number. You could be sitting at somewhere north of 9,200 next year. Looking out then, then your growth kind of picks up. Some of these new neighborhoods that are coming online right now, you could start seeing that growth pick up. Notice after 2023 starts, especially if you were to get another couple of new neighborhoods planned and started by about 2024, 2025. This is your moderate growth scenario, knowing what we know today. If you were to get maybe, let's say, Sky Ranch instead of starting sometime in the middle of the projection period. Maybe it started next year, they got a buyer right away. You would be looking at a little bit higher numbers in this area. Let's say that charter school would have been in 2025, theoretically, that we all don't want. Some of these numbers could be lower, and that would be the low-growth scenario right here. So looking out, of course, our confidence, remember I mentioned that year five, that's when our confidence kind of starts to wane. That could cause these low and high-growth scenarios. But you've got to kind of plan for this. And then Stacy will kind of talk to the tune of where that growth is happening. And I think that's really important as well, not just these overall numbers, but where you actually need to build these facilities.
So you heard a lot of information, just to briefly summarize, the important part of all of this is that all of the economy, the new housing, the students per home, where your current students live now, and past trends. All of this is analyzed at the planning unit level that Justin talked about at the beginning. So that we can use these building blocks for this future planning.
So for example, if you look at Montgomery Elementary School, and you say, wow, that seems really low. Remember, that looks at the zone from Montgomery Elementary School, it doesn't account for the students in the dual-language program.
That's correct. So this is another hotspot map, similar to what you saw earlier with regards to housing. But this represents added students over the next 10 years. The same hotspots of growth as far as new housing construction that Justin's been talking about. Red Lake Estates, Sky Ranch in the south, and of course, Fairwater and Pine Lake Cove in the central part of the district. But how does this relate to the elementary schools, say? So let's, I'm going to replace those subdivision labels with the attendance zones. So that you can see that the hotspots are distributed throughout the elementary zones. But Stewart Creek has a lot of hotspots, of course, Pine Lake Cove. And Keenan has most of them. So this is Fairwater, and this is Crown Oaks, and Red Lake Estates, and the future Sky Ranch. So the, how does this relate to, I mean, how does this aggravate? And what kinds of numbers are we talking about here? So these represent the attendance zones, and as we just mentioned, these numbers are the resident student population that's projected. So as you've mentioned, in Montgomery Elementary, currently, they're, well, for next fall, we're projecting 525 residents to live in that red area, which is the Montgomery campus. But that doesn't take into account the students that are transferring in. And the reason for that is because we have been talking a lot about where people are living. We're demographers, we project where people will, we can't project where you're going to move that dual-language program. So the winners as far as high growth and long-term are Stewart Creek and Keenan. Those are where you saw the red hotspots, and some of the orange as well. And so these numbers in a table format, I'll show you next. These are the projected resident students in each of these attendance zones over the next 10 years. And the yellow bars represent the year in which the projected student exceeds the practical capacity by over 120%. So that's just our internal threshold for estimating when. You can't throw enough portables on a campus to be able to accommodate more than 120% of that capacity. And there's some flexibility in there, there are a lot of differences in local tolerances. But in general, we estimate that Keenan will have about 1,000 resident students in the fall of 2025. Followed by Stewart Creek in the fall of '26, exceeding 1,000 students. And so this is our recommendation that additional elementary space capacity is going to be needed in about the fall of '25 in order to pull students from Stewart Creek and Keenan. And we also have Lincoln, which only has less than 600 students projected in the fall of '27. But because it's such a tiny facility, that exceeds its capacity in 2027 by 120%. And so the districts can consider maybe adding on to that facility to make it a little bit more economic as far as operational costs. Or some students could be zoned out of Lincoln with the construction of a new school to be opened in about '25.
And so that Brian, after your time here, could just remember, that's why it's so critical to get at the data because we have ASB study to say. You can close Lincoln Elementary School, save some money, and do some other things you want to do with it. Now we've got other data that says, yeah, we could have done it for a year. But then we would be not only needing to reopen it, but now we're already looking at a seventh elementary school. And this is on moderate growth.
At the junior high level, the growth is really distributed between two schools, but of course, focused a little bit more in the south, in Oak Hills. With Montgomery projected to contain almost 1,600 students by the end of this projection period, and Oak Hills almost 1,800. So when does that happen? Not until the end of this projection period. And remember, Justin talked a lot about our level of confidence, our interval of confidence, going through about the first five years or so. So we know that junior high number three will be necessary in the future and likely at the end of this projection period. That's so far out in the future that we don't really want to put a number on it. But just, you can recognize that a junior high number three will need to pull students from both of the current junior highs. Both for, to relieve overcrowding, but also if you've got three junior highs and two high schools, you want to have one school, or you have to have one school that's... have one school that's, like, the high schools are ultimately approximately the same size. And so you want to have as close to a fifty-fifty balance as you can split into those high schools. But that's almost a decade in the future, y'all can cross that bridge and go to it. So at the high school level, similar numbers, a concentration, a slight concentration in the south, with Lake Creek exceeding two thousand students by twenty thirty in ten years, and Montgomery High School exceeding eighteen hundred students. And again, the timing of this is, so Montgomery High School, of course, has plenty of capacity and can accommodate the eighteen hundred students projected. Lake Creek, with its smaller capacity, can be expanded to its planned core capacity when it was built, I understand that that was the intention to expand, and so that can be planned, plan for that to be needed in about twenty-six or so.
And if you walk out here and you make a right and you just look down that way, that's where the plan base to of Lake Creek starts.
I do want to be respectful, we have about...
Last thing.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
This is just the summary of what I just said, a new elementary school to open in about the fall of twenty-five or whenever is logistically possible, as well as, not on here, but potentially an expansion of Lincoln Elementary as well, if that fits into your local preferences and philosophy. An additional junior high capacity at the end of this projection period, but not necessarily in the next five years, and an expansion of Lake Creek as well in about the fall of twenty-six or so. So at this point, we can take any questions right now.
What about the, those maribets to the east of the light on Conroe? I want you to figure that out.
It's, I guess the only way we could figure something like that would be look at what we've got in the past and say, run it forward a year or two for turning up or turning around.
Well, I think we'll see y'all again at our boardroom, correct?
I mean, yeah.
They will not. Can we email you if we have questions?
Sure, I asked if you'd follow it through Chris, huh?
Follow it through Chris, and then we can go from there.
All right.
Board members, any questions? All right, well, here are none, and I'm going to say, let's join this meeting.